I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education for Monday, December 1st, 2025. And we're going to start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Civil Act of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States under God, in the discipline of liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Thank you. I'd like to begin the meeting with a moment of silence for New Canaan resident and friend, Mr. Jerry O'Connell, who passed away on Thursday at the age of 88, surrounded by his wife of 61 years, Judy, and his loving family. Gary and Judy moved to New Canaan in 1980, where they became New Canaan super fans and raised their wonderful family. Jerry was very active in countless charities and community organizations, including the New Canaan Sports Council, Men's Club, the Fresh Air Fund, St. Aloysius, the New Covenant House, coaching multiple New Canaan youth football and softball teams, and is chairman of the New Canaan Board of Education. Please join me in a moment of silence on Mr. O'Connell's behalf. Thank you. First, we're going to review and approve the agenda for December 1st, 2025. Can I get a motion to approve? Laura? Second? Hugo? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. And we're going to approve the minutes from our last meeting on November 17th, 2025. Can I get a motion? Matt? Second? Josh? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Comments from the public? To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to approach the board? Seeing no one, we'll move on. We're going to change the agenda ever so slightly and move the Saks PTC donation up first. That's going to bring Emily Saron and Sally Van Dam to the mic.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, and members of the Board of Education, and welcome Mr. Brambilla and Mr. Kay, and also to Dr. Letzti and his cabinet. Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you this evening to formally introduce our PTC co-presidents, as you just heard, Ms. Saron and Ms. Van Dam. They are going to share a little bit of insight in terms of one of the projects that we have been discussing and that Sarah and I have looked at for quite some time as an opportunity to continue to improve our space to better or best serve our students. This is one of the areas that we landed on that serves every single one of our students, as it's adjacent to our cafeteria, one of our areas, lobby areas, that gets a lot of use, a lot of high traffic, and has a lot of opportunity to improve the experience for our students. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to our wonderful PTC, who's always ever supportive and supports what we're able to do to best provide for our students. So, thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. My name is Sally Van Dam. I'm here with Emily, and we are together the co-presidents of the PTC at Saks. Dave, thank you for the introduction. As many of you know, we recently completed our annual fundraising campaign, which we call Celebrate Saks, and in that, we looked to raise money to improve the area outside of the cafeteria at school. So in the presentation that you're all looking at, you see that these three bays that we've identified as, they're kind of currently just like a drop zone. Students will throw jackets or lunch bags or things that they may not want to bring into the cafeteria or outside for recess. We're looking to furnish the space with cafe tables and more like banquet seating, so that the students can have an additional quieter space to utilize and gather during recess and lunch periods. We identified a company, Mian, as an educational furniture specialist, and they've provided us with these renderings of the furniture that we would envision going in these three spaces. One of the bays, if the, on your sheet, the bay on the left, there's some existing electrical equipment there. So the plan is to do one table with bench seating on either side, and then a high-top table with stools in that section, and then furnish the other two bays with the benches and tables that you see there. There are, if you noticed in the first page, there's some metal furniture in one of the bays currently. We think that we can take that, move it across the hall in that same space, and just add to the seating area. That's in there now. The total price for the three bays is a little over $59,000, which includes delivery. There will be some assembly required by the maintenance staff, but we've run it through them, and it does seem to be pretty straightforward. And that's kind of it. If you have any questions about what we're looking to do there, please let us know.
Erica?
Thank you for bringing this donation forward. The rendering has, looks like wheels on it, so I was wondering if the plan is for it to be mobile seating, and if there would be potentially other movement and uses of it, or if it's going to be stable in that spot?
So there will be flexibility to move it, but it will be locked, so it won't be movable by a student. But if there is a purpose or, you know, a different use for it, we will be able to move it that way.
Got it. And then I was also wondering, you mentioned that backpacks and whatnot get dropped in the area. Backpacks are still going to go somewhere. How do you, where do you anticipate those items will go, so that this space is usable?
There is an area currently, I guess it's the hallway to the fifth grade classrooms, that we've identified, and our plan is in kind of a second phase to put some type of storage solution there, because the kids will still be dropping things, for sure.
All right, great. Thank you.
Hugo?
This looks great. Thank you. Just a question about those electrical boxes. Is there going to be some type of separation between that and the two stools in that bay?
There will be space. Yeah.
Yeah, like just those guys there.
I mean, it's not-
And they're pretty low. I mean, it's hard to see like how high they are, if someone's going to hit them or something.
Yeah, they're a couple feet off the ground, if my memory is correct. I mean, they're not going to be any more exposed than they are currently.
Right.
And I think the furniture is, is not so wide that it's going to be, those chairs aren't going to be bumping up against that equipment.
I think the furniture will go up to that line of the D, where Dave is standing.
Yeah, so it's plenty of room.
There should be space.
From the left to the D. Yeah.
It's actually a lock cabinet, so it's a secure space as well. So we'll ensure, as it's configured, that we take into account where it's lined up and ensure safety with it as well.
Cool. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the donation from the Saks PTC in the amount of $59,099.55 for furniture for the Saks cafeteria lobby. Can I get a motion? Kate? Second? Matt? All in favor? Thank you, guys.
We have one more.
Oh.
Doing double duty here. I also just wanted to point out, this year, we're also going to update that artwork that's above the bays. You can see those students' faces. That has, those kids have graduated long ago. And then also, on the right-hand picture, where the exit is, there are these coat of arms that have also been up there for a long time, and a Saks banner that's purple and yellow, from when Saks' colors were purple and yellow. So we're working on updating all of that, and we're working with a graphic designer in town, and that will be coming along next, but this year as well. Our other donation tonight, and we just piggybacked since we're here anyways, is for the Saks Middle School eighth-grade bash. We do this every year. We'd like to hire James Daniel Entertainment again for the event. It's on June 10th, which is a Wednesday, rain date of June 11th. And the cost for James Daniel is $7,020. He sort of does a lot, all involved himself, which is great. So it's just one contractor that we kind of work with. He's the DJ. He has a dance motivator. He brings a lot of games, papashaw, air hockey, cornhole. So kids who don't want to be dancing out in the field, they have all these games they can be playing. What is the spike ball? Furniture seating lounge area, photo booth. So that is for June 10th, and it's over $5,000. So we would like your approval for that as well, if you have any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the donation from the Saks PTC in the amount of $9,998 to fund the Saks eighth-grade bash? Erica? Second? Josh? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay. Back to reports and recognition. First up, for our CAAB legislative update, is Ms. Sheila McKay.
Yes, and I'm very happy to introduce Sheila to you briefly. Sheila has been with us before. As we enter into the legislative season, it's always a good idea to get an update from CAAB, who, as you know, represents boards of education across the state. I'm sure you'll talk about that briefly. But Sheila, thank you for joining us tonight and giving us an overview of what's happened and some thoughts about what to expect.
Great, great. Thank you very much for having me. CAAB is a service operated for all of you on your behalf. We're happy to do professional development work. We have tons of workshops, just came off of a very big convention and delegate assembly. We do have some virtual events as well, and some things that are archived online in terms of professional development as well. So with that, you have a copy of what I'm going to speak to tonight. There are ongoing, even though the session has yet to begin for next February, there was just a special session. I'll talk about that. But it'll start February 4th. It'll end in May. It's a short session this year. It's a two-year term, but this is the second legislative session of a two-year cycle. There are, there is an ongoing work being done for certification by the Department of Education off of legislation that passed a couple of years ago. It's very in the weeds in terms of the work they're trying to do, but they're trying to create a little bit more flexibility and creativity in terms of still maintaining a high level of expertise for teachers to adhere to, but allowing for more special ed work, allowing for just some movement in pre-K to six in terms of certifications and so forth. The first round of certification changes went to the subcommittee of the State Board of Education last month, and they'll be continuing to work in the next couple of years or more to get this work done. Mandates. There is an existing mandates committee that has met once so far. They're just starting out. But there have been task forces throughout the years, and now this isn't a Education Mandates Review Advisory Council, an existing longstanding, will be forever council, that is just beginning its work. They, we would love to hear, as you go through your budget cycle, as you go through your, any cycle of professional development for teachers, or any other mandate you have on the books, any ways in which the implementation isn't working or working really well. We're always looking for compliments on the work that they do, if we can pass on. But any ways in which we can pass on changes that might need to be made in terms of implementation. We know that the reading was a rocky start for many districts, but we know that there was a science behind that, and many districts are working towards that rather smoothly at this point. We know a number of years ago, before the reading, there were some changes to special education in terms of forms and so forth. There may still be some more changes to that work going forward because of the education funding as well, and the ability to have fully-staffed special ed teachers in the state of Connecticut. So the work of the mandates committee, in fact, they just canceled their next meeting, but they're on the books to get another meeting scheduled through Google, but, or through a poll. But they're going to be looking at some work in terms of professional development mandates, as well as other mandates. And that works being chaired by Glenn Lingeri, Dr. Lingeri, from the Connecticut Association of Schools, the Principals Association. The housing bill that passed in the special session in November was one of four bills that went forward, but this is the only bill that really impacts education. And there were two sections, Section 29, Section 46. 29 was an open choice voucher pilot program. I shouldn't really have put the emphasis on voucher, because it's not an education voucher. It's a housing voucher. So there is a definite difference there. As you'll see in the second paragraph, it mentions 20 RAP, Rental Assistant Program Certificates over a two-year period. And it's an opportunity for movement of families in terms of where their kids are actually going to school. So that's a program there. The next one is School Construction Grant Reimbursement Rate. So, beginning in July of 2026, it allows for a five percentage point increase in the state school reimbursement rate for construction grant reimbursement rate. There are, at least, you have to qualify, municipality must meet at least one of the following conditions. Your planning requirements and demonstrate steps taken to implement housing growth policies, qualify for transit-oriented communities, adopt a development district through a memorandum of agreement with CMDA. And I'm embarrassed to say, I don't know what CMDA is, but housing is not one of our strong points. So, but that is an opportunity for districts and municipalities to work together.
Sheila, can I ask you a quick question about that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I'm just curious to know if you recall anything in the bill that also set a ceiling amount per square foot for renovations or new construction that would be reimbursed?
I don't, I don't know.
I thought I had heard from somebody that that was in the housing bill that was just signed. Towards the end, there was something that sort of limited the amount of money eligible for reimbursement.
I will look and get back to you.
Would you? Thank you.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Bergen, should say Bergen Commission. In the acronym, it is an acronym, it's spelled out underneath there. This, the Education Cost Sharing Formula, ECS, has been studied, I would say, every five years for any number of reasons. This is the latest version. This legislation passed in 2023. They met end of last year for the first time, and have met again about two weeks ago for the second time. Very slow starts. They are, as you can see, trying to accomplish a great deal in at least a page's worth of summary. I guess I would say to you, this is an opportunity to look at accountability. It is an opportunity to look at financing and impact of magnet schools, choice schools, charter schools. It's a four-part study. One of the things that has been accomplished already in legislation is the second, no, the, well, number four, the first number four, you'll see. It says the inclusion of special education as a need factor in the ECS grant formula. So that has been accomplished at a percentage rate. I believe it's 50% of the formula, 50%, yeah. There are, it's massive what they're trying to do. There are four parts, as you see there, too. First part examining school districts, charter schools, magnet schools, and their entitlements, the compensation, restrictions on the use of and reporting of additional fundings received under the act, both ECS and new grants, optimal class sizes, and as I said, the fourth one has been accomplished. There, this work is being co-chaired by Representative Miriam Khan, a former school board member from Windsor, who is now a sitting state representative, and also, in her day job, a special ed teacher. And then the other person is the co-chair, is State Senator Doug McCrory, who is a educator by trade for a number of years, and represents the city of Hartford, and Bluefield as well, I believe. The next item on here is House Bill 7009, which did pass in the special, in the previous legislative session in 2025, but it didn't pass the Senate. It only passed the House. So it died at the end of the legislative session. But we expect we will see all of this, if not parts of this, in the next legislative session. The legislature has public hearings in each of the committees on smaller bills usually, but sometimes there, you know, the mental health bill was 100 pages when it began, but the student mental health bill. But these are, how many, how many sections are there? 29 different, 30 different sections of this bill. These started out as probably at least 35 bills. I'm sorry, not, 25 bills, probably. The legislature will probably for sure look at Sections 26 through 29, which is the crisis response drills. The co-chair of the Education Committee is a former school board member, and a representative from Fairfield, Representative Jen Lieber, who personally had some issues in terms of the way in which students, her students, her children, were being taught crisis response drills and ways in which this was implemented at the district level. So she's been working on this bill for a few years. It had had a little bit of a pullback when Newtown didn't know about it to begin with and wanted to be consulted. And then they took some time to really look at the Connecticut Center for School Safety, which works with Eastern Connecticut State University. And they've taken a great interest and have been a great resource to the work that Representative Lieber's been doing. And it's actually been co-chaired with a state rep, Republican state rep from downstate, really nice guy, maybe around 3 o'clock in the morning, I don't remember his name. But, you know, there is work going forward on that, so we expect to see that go forward again. There is, maybe I'll start again from the beginning, a state seal possibly for civics education that will go forward. Section 5, Plans for Limiting Smart Devices in Schools. This would require, versus the guidance that you're under now, for local and regional school boards to adopt a policy each year, starting in 2026, '27, a year, and limit the devices in the schools they oversee. The State Board of Ed gave you guidance in October of 2024, that I assume many districts are utilizing to work out the policy as best it is in your communities at different grade levels. And I'll move on unless we have questions. Opportunity for the Department of Education to work on curriculum for Islamic and Arab Studies, to make that curriculum available to districts. A working group to address anti-Semitism. Kindergarten waivers. This would, if this went forward next year, this would make the kindergarten waiver process optional for school districts, starting in July of 2026. Again, now that was the way the bill read then. If they were going to do that, they would probably move the date out, or I'm not quite sure how that would work. Racial imbalance, the state paused their racial imbalance law, and that pause is now, it has expired, and this would try to extend that pause, or re-pause, I guess maybe, a better way to say it. Information on prior and current year, original and actual expenditures by school, in the school budget process. This would require information on prior and current fiscal years to be included in the itemized estimates prepared during the local and regional school budgeting process. Just transparency, transparency, transparency is what districts are looking, what the legislature is looking for. MOUs, again, another effort at transparency. It has to be the deadline for when you, certain information should be required, and then required to be updated at least every three years. Would require, Section 20 would require at least one school board member to be present during teacher and administrator negotiations. Section 22 would limit the out-of-school suspensions for students in grades pre-school through two, to instances constituting serious physical harm. Expelled students in Section 23 would require the board to offer an alternative education opportunity for students 16 to 18, who are expelled for the first or second time. And I guess those are the most of the ones that I would probably point out to you at this point. And then there's a section here, I've just included, on vouchers. At the federal level, there is no mandate that states have a voucher program. States can voluntarily choose whether to set up a voucher nonprofit. So we do also expect that there will be a public hearing legislation around some of the terrible considerations that happened in Waterbury and New Britain in terms of DCF and the children that died. While we don't think that, there is homeschooling processes in the state of the Connecticut, and there is no particular requirement for those individuals in terms of parents. Every district has an opportunity to have the parents come in and work a little bit with the district, but most districts, you know, work as best they know with the students that come through their doors, for part, signing off parents, saying, you know, educate my student at home. So we expect massive amount of people to come out for that, if that goes forward. So, I'm happy to take questions. I'm happy to have you involved in the process. The legislative process is such that public hearings are open now in a virtual way, as well as in person. So if you can't get to Hartford and you feel strongly about an issue, there is an opportunity to testify, or you may just submit testimony as well. There is an opportunity as well to work district to district. If you have a strong concern about something, and we know somebody in Ashford or Eastford or Mystic has an issue, we're happy to make sure people are aware and working together on issues, and we're a great resource in that way.
Thank you, Sheila. Any questions for Sheila? Erica?
So the Bergen, thank you very much. There's a lot to absorb in here, so I appreciate. For the Bergen Commission, is there a, it addresses the ECS formula. Is there a hold harmless? Like, is there, in these types of changes that they're considering, is there a world in which a district's contribution could go down? Like, are the, you know, that could be the case for New Canaan? Or are these all changes that are added, potentially additive for districts?
These, so there's no specific changes in here. It's all study, look, make changes. There's no particular, as I see it, no, there's no particular on, no, there's nothing like that in here. There is already in the existing formula a phase out, which will happen over a number of years still. They keep pushing out the phase out.
I will share with caps, we do push very hard to ensure that there's a hold harmless provision in any change in funding. Because as you know, systems are built around the funding streams and things that come. And so if- funding streams and things that come. And so if things were significantly to change in a short period of time, that would be very disruptive and challenging for any district. So we do, and I know Cave also has likewise pushed for that in, you know, appropriate spaces, but that a hold harmless agreement to a change in the ECS, for instance, while, you know, for us, it might be $275,000 that we receive in ECS. That money goes to the town, but if that were to go, then it would need to be replaced. Same with excess costs and other things. So we do try to make sure there's a hold harmless provision in any change in funding. It's not just here in New Canaan, but there are many districts that would be harmed by some of the changes. In others, that would benefit, and that's great to benefit. But that's where we think hold harmless is the right way to go.
And there are many legislators that are involved in those conversations, you know, when they see the dollar values that come out associated with ECS, you know, where's my town? What's the number? You know, what was it last year? And is there a hold harmless? Because, you know, they want to bring back the money for their district.
Yeah.
Or maintain the money for their district.
Maintain.
All right. As I had a question, the House bill that you said is probably going to come back in 2026, and you said that that is going to be in the February to May session?
Yes.
Does that mean that this will be under consideration throughout that period, and anything that comes out of the session will happen at the very end of that session?
That is the way it usually happens. It's too late, usually very late. But no, they, I mean, they meet again in, you know, opening day is February 4. There are committees that will, every committee will start meeting in the month of February. There's committee deadlines, and then the work comes to the full chambers, the House and Senate. There is an opportunity when the House meets for the first time in February, end of February, and then throughout March and so forth. Legislation could go early. Depends on how many hands are in a piece of legislation. Depends how many bills get merged into another piece of legislation, and how important the subject is. The mental health bill, as I said, when it first came out two years ago, was 101 pages, and that was very unusual to begin with, in the first day of the session, to have it be 101 pages. Many bills are one sentence, two sentences, and then they flush it out in public hearing and in the committee bill-writing process.
Okay. And since this has gone through the House, what is your experience, or Cave's experience, say about how close a potential bill could be to this version that the House has already passed?
Yeah, I would not expect all these to be in one bill again. They will, you know, some of this will go in other bills, some of it will just, it will happen differently. But you should expect that we will be telling you in our weekly advocacy highlights that we send out, that there'll be public hearings on most, if not all, of these bills, all these sections.
And is there a reason to believe that it's more likely to go through?
Yes, I mean, I would, yes.
Why did it not?
Time, negotiations. I think it's a couple of different reasons, yeah.
So because we operate in education, do you, is education a priority this session, or is there a possibility that other things will take a priority and that education may not?
I would say to you, education's always a priority, but there are, I wish I should at some point count how many bills they hear, but, you know, there are a number of bills in a long session that they hear. So they hear many, many bills. And they have probably five or six, probably five public hearings, some of them going for hours. If they start at 10, they could end at 10 or 12 at night. So, yeah, I mean, I would still expect these to come forward. Again, I wouldn't necessarily expect every one of these. I think the vision screening was something that the department moved forward on. The health assessment forms was definitely something that the department moved, wanted to move forward on. So, yeah, I mean, and certainly crisis response drills will come forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Josh?
Sheila, thank you for coming.
Sure.
Just a quick question on the House bill, Section 5, which is, has to do with limiting smart devices in schools. The summary says that it's, requires boards to adopt a policy limiting smart devices in schools. Is the language in the House bill any more specific than that? Is there a specific mandate for what that limitation has to say, or is it just a broad mandate to have some sort of limitation?
It's broad. So the State Board of Ed passed its guidance onto districts, or passed guidance, voted on it, passed it, in August of '24. And the legislature, some of the legislators want to have their thumb on it as well. So that's what this is, and it's more of a requirement versus allowing, well, required policy. And we would always allow districts that opportunity to require policy in terms of have a plan, have some idea of what you want to be said, and have it broadly worked out in the community as well, not just at the board level. Have it, have some work done at the community level as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
And Sheila, just as you're wrapping up, I do want to thank Cave for lots of things, but including the recent advocacy around special education legislation. I know that work group had done, had put together some recommendations that then did translate into some meaningful changes in special education regulations, specifically the duration of due process hearings, having a limit on the number of days there. That's a significant benefit for districts. And there's some other changes that I think are incremental but are moving in the right direction to help districts to most effectively assist and educate our students in need of special education services. So thank you for that and other legislation that has helped to improve things at the district level.
Yeah, thank you. We do a lot of work around special education because it's louder sometimes in ECS in terms of that wanting for those funds, because that doesn't impact what your districts can afford to do. Many districts are, you know, well over 20% of their budget goes towards special education. So, yeah. So expect more work on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the action item phase of the meeting. First up, our budget assumptions and related priorities and the first read of our budget calendar.
Yes. So you have in front of you both of these documents. The first is titled Goals, Budget Assumptions and Related Priorities for the '26-'27 Budget Development. As you know, we have our budget workshop a week from tonight, where we'll go into more detail around the budget assumptions and priorities that we have here. But it's, we like to get it out for you to be able to take a look at prior to that conversation. And again, we'll go into a bit more detail. What we attempt to do with this document each year is review our district goals that are approved in the spring and in the summer, and to begin articulating how those goals translate into resource needs. So what our investments will look like in the budget going forward. So it's really to draw a line between the aspirational goals and objectives that we have to the resource decisions we make and the funding allocations, and then we get into the actual budget document itself. So as you'll see, it mirrors our goal document with five overarching goals. You know, it's student performance, it's communication, it's teacher quality and excellence, it's school environment and safety, and then it's stewardship of the resources. Those are the, those five overarching goals. But then within each one, it looks to more operationalize the resource allocations around those strategic priorities. So you have it to take a look at. It's something we had to do a first and second reading on, so it would not be voted on until our meeting on the 15th. And we will discuss it in some more detail when we're together next Monday. Then you also have a copy of the budget calendar, which had a slight revision just recently. I know we've gone through the dates a couple of times, but wanted to give you this with, to make sure you had the most accurate and current information for us. As you know, we have, again, our, on the 8th, we have our budget workshop, beginning at 6 o'clock here, and we'll work our way through all of that. And then you see that we have, on the 5th, which is the Monday back from our holiday break, we have our budget presentation, where we'll go through and spend a few hours getting to know the budget like the back of our hands. And you see the other dates there as well. So again, we can, we'll revisit these in the future, but wanted to get them to you as soon as possible once they're ready. Want to do a motion on it?
Yep. So we're going to do a motion to accept as a first reading the budget assumptions and related priorities for fiscal year 2027 budget development. Can I get a motion? Erica, second. Laura?
Thank you. And then we also have our '27-'28 district calendar, which might seem like a distant contemplation here, but it is something that we like to get on the books so that people can make their plans. So '27-'28 is an interesting year, and so there is a little bit, something different here that I want to talk about briefly. The, we're looking at a year where we would begin, we'd have convocation on the 26th of August, 27th, and 30th would be our professional learning days, and the first day of school would be Tuesday, August 31st, which is about as late as we can go in the calendar, the way this sets up, because Labor Day is not until September 6. So I dream of a day we'll start after Labor Day. '27-'28 is not the year. So we'll keep having that conversation a bit. But as you look in October, there's only one day that falls. It's the Yom Kippur is the same day as Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day, and that's it for the October day. So that helps us out a little bit in our, in our flow, you know, overall. And so we go same into November with our half day, the day before Thanksgiving. Our conferences work the same way, and then the holiday break. The one difference that we built into this calendar for your consideration is, given sort of how everything flows, if you look into April, the April break occurs the week before Easter, so it would be the 10th through the 14th, with the 14th being Good Friday, which is a holiday regardless. And so what we're looking at and proposing for consideration is the Monday, the 17th as well. So having the five days during the week, and then the Easter weekend, and then also having that the Monday, the 17th as a day, and then coming back together on Tuesday, the 18th. There's a variety of reasons for that. They're smiling because I've been talking about this for a few years. I like Easter, and so I think it's an important holiday for many families and some travel. And I think that it's always a challenge to enjoy the Easter holiday with family and friends and travel, and then be back in school on Monday morning. Attendance isn't great across the schools on that day. It also is the observance of Easter for the Greek Orthodox Church, I believe, on that day. So that just lines up as well. So something to be considered, certainly not decided now, but beyond that, we still would have our day, February the 18th, as a professional learning day, no students that day, and then the winter break is intact. And you see, so our last day would be Wednesday, the 14th, which would be a half day. According to Board of Education policy, our last day cannot be past the Friday of the third full week in June, right? I mean, that's policy. It can be if it has to be. It all depends on what happens. But state law would trump that and says you have to use all of June. But we prefer not to do that. But that actually, the Friday of the third full week is all the way down to the 23rd. Not, I'm not saying we would want to do that, but if something, if this were to be a snowmageddon kind of a year, there's plenty of time to make up those days if need be. So for your consideration. And again, we can discuss more on the 15th, if you like.
Great. Can I get a motion to accept as a first reading the 2027-2028 School District Calendar? Hugo, second. Matt, all, no all in favor?
Nope, no vote. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to one more donation from the New Canaan Community Foundation, the grant.
Yes, so we are in receipt of a generous grant from the New Canaan Community Foundation to help support the program of a week and a half ago with Lenore Skanezi, Developing Independence and Confidence in Our Kids. I know many of you were able to attend that. Thank you for coming. And she, so as you may know, she had a presentation at 4 o'clock in the afternoon for our faculty, and then stuck around, and then had our 7:00 PM presentation as well. And it was very well attended. I thought there was a great, great crowd in the, in the audience there over at Saks, and she was informative and entertaining. So the New Canaan Community Foundation has agreed to help us out with the costs, and they've donated $5,000 towards that for the board. So just here to request your acceptance of that, so we can use it to defray some of the costs.
Terrific. Can I get a motion to accept the grant from the New Canaan Community Foundation in the amount of $5,000 for the Lenore Skanezi Developing Independence and Confidence in Our Kids presentation and follow-up programming? Josh, second. Laura, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Comments from the public? No public. Announcements and future business?
Yep. Just as I mentioned, we have the board workshop a week from tonight, and the administration will be meeting on Wednesday evening to prepare some of our slides, et cetera, for that night. Come at 6. Come hungry. We always have a good dinner, and we enjoy each other's company as we talk about some of the concepts and ideas that'll be driving the budget as we move forward. As you may know, we don't talk numbers at that point, right? We don't, we don't have them, and nor is it really the right thing to be talking about initially. We like to talk about ideas and concepts and vision and the mission of what we're doing. So it's about really kids and ideas and programs. That same night, actually, no, this Wednesday is our first round of the state football, state championship. It was supposed to be Tuesday night, but unfortunately, they've moved it to Wednesday night because of the weather. So we will be playing here again, a rematch of the Turkey Bowl against Dariann, probably around 6 o'clock or so that evening. And that will, that's the first round. If we're fortunate enough to win that round, the second round will be Monday night. It would also be here on Dunning as the highest rated ranked, you know, for number one ranked team in our class. So that would be in conflict with our board workshop, but I'm sure we'll get score updates along the way. We'll do our best to stay up with it. But congratulations to the team. Congratulations to all of our fall student athletes and teams and the outstanding performances that they've put together. And now we look already forward to the winter season, which is just gearing up and getting underway. So no rest for the, for our student athletes. But we will be talking a little bit in the budget about athletic transportation, because, you know, all of this postseason play is really cutting into our transportation budget. So we'll have to, I think that's a price worth paying, but it will be a part of the conversation. Congratulations to all of our student athletes, coaches.
So before we adjourn to executive session, just a quick announcement from me. The Board of Education is looking to fill our current vacancy. We'd love to receive resumes and indications of interest from the broader New Canaan community. People can send any and all information to my board email address, which is phil.hogan@ncps-k12.org. We'd only ask that those submissions be completed by the end of the week, which is Friday, December 5. Thank you. Now, we're going to adjourn to executive session to, actually, I guess, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn to executive session. In accordance with CGS 1-200, the subject to be discussed is a confidential memo. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Hugo, second. Matt, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.